So for a regular agenda, we have one change. Under item three, it's that location agreement with USL here. We are tabling that at this time, so that item we will not do tonight. Otherwise, the rest of the agenda is as printed. Again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Hagan, second by Peterson, that we approve the consent agenda per the regular agenda with that one change. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Under announcements and correspondence, we have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody that would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on our agenda tonight, please step up to the podium and limit your time up there to three minutes or less. Any public input? All right, let's go to community department head reports. We have, looks like we have Barb Blackie here tonight, and she's reporting on the Rotary Club. Hi Barb.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. I'm Barb Blackie, and as you said, I'm reporting this month for the Wapaka Rotary Club and the Greater Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network. And Rotary's been a part of this network, beginning the collaboration with other organizations in the city since the cultural plan began in 2018. Tonight, I come to offer a perennial thank you for the city's support of Rotary throughout the year, most recently with last weekend's Oktoberfest. We hope the event brought attention to our downtown area, to local businesses, and it's another example of our dynamic community. This year with the city's support, we were, these are just a few highlights, we have a long list that I won't go through, but some highlights were, with your support, we were able to install the downtown landmark clock that marked our 30th anniversary, which turned out nicely on our downtown square. Yearly, we do a project that's our Riverside Park. Thank you, city, for bringing in the woodchips. We spruce it up and plant the flowers that make the park look nice. Our education grant program continues, and in the past 12 years, we've granted over $100,000 to teachers to implement innovative projects. Right now, our Rotary Youth Exchange Program currently has three Wapaka students out. One is in Germany, one is in Colombia, and one is in Brazil. And we also have three students attending Wapaka High School and living with Wapaka host families from Brazil, Thailand, and Colombia. And we feel strongly that this Rotary International Program strengthens members of our community, builds tolerance, and fosters understanding, and we're recognized by our district as being the leading club in this program. Something that work that needs to be completed is that our main local focus right now is for members of Rotary to determine what can be done about the childcare shortage in Wapaka. We have a study group that's working with the community to see what can be done, what can be bought, how we can help with our funds. The Rotary Club of Wapaka is one of 46,000 Rotary Clubs around the world. We have over 90 members in our own club, several of whom are on your committee, or our council, I should say, and we have shared responsibility to take action where we live and to support efforts around the world to create positive change. We thank you for keeping our club updated on what's going on around here with Aaron's presentation, which everyone really learns a lot from when he comes to report at Rotary. And thank you for helping us make Wapaka be the greatest place in the world to live. Final thanks, just thanks for your continued support, and you know, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Things are changing all the time with our club, and love to have you come visit us, come stop in. You're always welcome to a meeting. All right? Thank you.
You have to learn to sing. All right, Barb, thank you. Okay, given that we have a committee of the whole meeting tonight, we're gonna do abbreviated version of our department head report, so I'm just gonna start. Eric, do you want to start and just give any highlights that you have going on in the next couple of weeks here?
I will provide just two. First is that we've got the outdoor movie showing this Friday, weather permitting. It'll be on the Bank First Lawn, right across from City Hall Library. That'll be starting this Friday at 6:00 PM. We'll have a couple of food trucks out, as well as some games and activity for the kids. We also will, on November the 9th, be unveiling our new exhibit. That'll be the traveling exhibit, American: The Holocaust, which was one that we had applied for and received among just a very small number of libraries through the American Library Association. So that's very exciting, as always Liz Kinnear does fantastic work for us as our exhibit room manager. That's it.
Thank you, Eric. Matt, do you have anything?
Yeah, just one thing. This Saturday, we have our Food for Flight Program. Between 9:00 and 2:00, if you bring in a bag of non-perishable food items, you get a free airplane ride, and then we donate those items to the food pantry. So 9:00 to 2:00.
All right. Jared?
Yeah, we have a WEDC roundtable coming up this Thursday at the Danes Hall. I believe doors open at, was it 9:00? 9:00 to noon. So all are welcome for that. We have about 20 attendees currently, so pretty good turnout. And then we are planning to have our downtown partnership meeting, our next downtown partnership meeting, on the 24th of September.
Thanks, Jared. Steph?
I have nothing.
Justin?
Waste water, we are wrapping up, we have wrapped up our Bowlby Lift Station preliminary study. This is one of our more important lift stations in our system. Not only is it a lift station replacement, we're extending sewer again to help spur some development, and we're looping the water lines, so that price tag includes more than just a lift station. Streetside, we are working with the county. We secured some permits in order to connect to Royalton or County Highway K, and that is to be ready for the first phase of River North. So when those, when that development starts, we have a connection permit, we can make that connection. We have several new meters, which is always great to see. One in particular is on Industrial Drive. That's one of the new apartments that is up, and looks like they are working very hard at that area, and at least one is near complete. The rec center boilers, we had a meeting today. We're kind of honing in on that capital project, so that is slated for next year barring the budget approvals, but it's something we're working on now to get a jump on.
All right. Thanks, Justin. Laura, go ahead.
Big news for Lakeman. The infield is done, and it looks amazing, so if you have a chance to drive past and take a look, this weekend, Saturday at 9:00 to 3:00, is our 10th Annual Fallarama fundraiser for Friends of Wapaka Parks. It's gonna be the biggest show yet with tons of entertainment, lots of food trucks, and way more vendors than normal, so come on down if you're free. And then mark your calendars for October 25th, Halloween on Main, 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
All right. Thanks, Laura. Paul?
All right. We have a drug takeback, October 26th, at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the Wapaka Police Department Lobby. There you can bring any unused medications and then place them in the box, where an officer will be there. There's no questions asked, and you also can bring pet medications if you have any of those laying around as well. We are holding a fundraiser on October 12th, 2024, in the parking lot of Billy's Heating and Cooling, located at N2751 County Highway QQ. That'll go from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM, and the department will be selling chili, chili cheese nachos, nachos and caramel apple slices. Money raised will be used to set up the first scholarship fund for someone entering emergency services. So our community outreach group at the police department wants to set up a scholarship, and that's what we'll be using that for. Lastly, we have the Homecoming Parade coming up, September 27th at 5:00 PM, and the route will be the same as last year.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Josh?
Just lots of odds and ends going on. One of the big projects is trying to finish up the city calendar, the printed one we do. We will have that available at the election in November. We figured that would be an easy way to get to as many residents as possible while saving on postage costs. Wapaka Online, we are still experimenting with some of the new equipment. We're hoping to do another experiment tomorrow, but lots of promising things with the new technology as far as speed and getting through some obstructions. And I think the only other big thing right now is there's a process to continue with the branding, the new logo we have, the look, the feel. There's a process right now getting department logos done, and some background work on preparing to get all that stuff available, and making sure the different systems we have, we can start using it. So you'll start to see, hopefully, a more consistent look and feel from city-printed material, visual material, over the coming months. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Josh. Barb, do you have something?
Just one thing. For election, we do have a computer in the hallway at City Hall. If anybody wants, needs to register to vote or request an absentee ballot, they can, they don't have access to a computer, they can come down to City Hall and sign up there. And absentee voting starts October 22nd and runs the rest of that week, and then Monday through Friday the week after that. That's it.
All right. Thanks. Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor Smith. So Thursday, Jared already mentioned that WEDC will be hosting that meeting at the Danes Hall. Also that day, this one's not open to the public necessarily, but just an FYI, city managers and administrators from around the Region 3 and the State Association will be coming to Wapaka for their meeting. We'll be hosting that later in the after, actually around the noon hour and into the afternoon. And then if you guys all can mark your calendars for October 9th, we're looking to hold a staff and elected officials appreciation for a luncheon, and we are looking at the front hall, that city lawn, to do so. So Wednesday, October 9th.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Anybody else? Council members, you have anything this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Colin.
Last Tuesday, I believe, I was able to attend the Lunch and Learn, I guess it was Wednesday, program that the library supported. It was in conjunction a little bit with the food justice program that they had at the, or the exhibit they had in the exhibit room. The reason I bring it up, I happen to sit next to two women who were involved with the Wapaka County Food Wise Program, and they had expressed some, some thanks, I guess, to our ability to have a farmer's market. This is one of the few farmer's markets in the area where you can use SNAP or WIC funding to buy fresh produce, and that's one of the goals of their program, and our support in this room for that program of having a farmer's market helps support getting fresh foods, fruits and vegetables to those people that might not otherwise be able to afford it. So they expressed some appreciation, and I wanted to pass it on.
Thanks, Colin. Everybody else? All right, let's move on under, let's see, we have an ordinance, second reading of an ordinance. This has to do with Neighborhood Business District Dimensional Standards. Jared, you want to just tell us again what that's about, and if you had any discussion with anybody?
Of course. Excuse me. This one starts on page 98 of your packets. There is a red line on 99. Really, the only change is lowering the street yard minimum setback by five feet, so from 20 to 15 feet. This remains consistent then with the rear yard, as well as the intent of the B1 Neighborhood Business District to be more walkable, pedestrian-friendly, you know, buildings a little bit closer to the sidewalk, roadway, et cetera. So that's really the big change. No comments from the public have come into my office.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion to approve this ordinance change.
Move to approve.
Second? Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve or adopt ordinance number, help me out here, oh, 10-2024, an ordinance amending Chapter 17.131, parent 3, B1 Neighborhood Business District Dimensional Standards in the zoning code. Any further discussion? If not, Barb will call the roll.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, Jared, thank you. Next up, we have another second reading of an ordinance, has to do with offenses in the school property, and Captain, I'll turn it over to you if you're okay. If you want to just explain why this ordinance is in front of us.
Yes, we wanted to add vaping to the tobacco ordinance. We have had a significant increase in teens, especially at the high school, using vaping devices, so our current ordinance did not cover vapes, so we just basically wanted to add that to it so we can enforce that. That pretty much briefly summarizes what we're adding, so.
Okay. Thank you. You guys have heard what she said, or he has said, sorry. So we're looking for a motion to approve, if you're okay with it.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Dijkstra, second by Nagel, that we approve or adopt ordinance number 11-2024, an ordinance amending Chapter 9.07, offenses upon school property, Chapter 9.22, possession or use of tobacco and vapor products prohibited, penalties in Chapter 9.23, restrictions on sale or gift of cigarettes or tobacco vapor products. Without any other discussion, Barb will call the roll.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, under New Business, actually, we have an ordinance repealing and recreating Section 12.126 of the Weights and Measures Program fees. And this is the first reading, so Barb, you want to just give us a?
Sure. Update here. This ordinance can, is on page, well, the memo's on page 105, and Eric Maggio with the Appleton Weights and Measures is on remote. When I had met with Eric earlier in the year, they, he had stated that he would, they need two more days with the city of Wapaka instead of meeting 23 days, they're gonna meet 20, or come 25 days to service the gas stations and businesses. And there's some changes in the fee schedule with that change. And Eric, if you want to add anything, or if anybody has any questions?
Yeah, we updated our fee schedule in 2022, and we presented it then. Our fee schedule is still quite, most of the fees are well below the state average for municipalities that have a Weights and Measures Program. And we were about 60% in our revenue deficit, so our first goal was to increase those fees, and then, that was about two years ago. And then this year, we brought the fees that we, the daily rate that we charge each community that contracts through us, we raised those as well. So these fees reflect that daily rate increase.
Eric, if you don't mind, could you please just explain the benefit in going through the consortium rather than the state?
Well, we're there. You pay us to do the work, we show up. I have the data to prove it. We've been doing this for almost 20 years in the city of Appleton, or city of Wapaka. The consortium started in 2003. We have 11 communities, so that means our staff is there for the trainings that the state provides. We share the equipment across the program. Last year, I was able to secure a lot of grants to replace equipment that hasn't been replaced in over two decades. So we bring a lot of value to the consortium with continuous improvement practices, ways to cut costs and just provide good services to our communities. And that's not just to the citizens, it's also to the businesses. So if we go into a business and find out that their pill counter at a pharmacy was giving too many pills away or too less, that's, you know, that can be a benefit to them, the same with a gas pump or a scale in a store.
All right. Thank you, Eric. All right, so you have a ordinance which is on page, it starts on 105, it looks like 105 and 106, right?
106.
Oh, I'm sorry, 106 and 107. And that, this is just the first reading, so we'll see this at our next meeting, and which will be the first Tuesday in October. Eric, thank you for attending tonight virtually. Appreciate it.
Eric, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, next up, also another first reading. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 18A, the city of Wapaka Park and Recreation Areas. Laura, you want to take this?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So we have the strike through on page 116, and I'll take you down to there to show you some of the things that we are looking at changing. The S in Parks and Recreation, we are going to add in simply because it's in all of our branding, and it's in our signage and website and all the things that we use, and ultimately what we say, and we have multiple parks. So if that's okay with you, we're looking at putting the S in. We are also going to update the roadway for both Swan Park, it is known as Brainerd Drive, not Brainerd's Drive, and Lakeman Field is now Community First Lakeman Field on Cronkway, so we need to change the address on that as well, and the name. And then if you scroll down to page 117, to create consistency, we are going to have every single park open at 6:00 AM and close at 10:00 PM. The city police, the chief would like this, it's great for consistency, and it's great for our messaging as well, and it eliminates a lot of confusion. Additionally, on B, on the top of page 117, the gazebo has been a topic of conversation ultimately since August of 2022, where we talked about raising the fee to $25, and will continue to offer the permits through the city hall, which will be good for City Hall Tenno and the facilities superintendent as well. And then moving down to Section 3A, we're gonna take out Schwend and Washington Park because that indicates that they're open 6:00 to 9:00, which is, it's gonna be in the same timeframe as the rest of the parks. We no longer have tennis courts at 3C, so we're gonna take that out. And then at Riverview Park, Rotary Riverview Park, we no longer have a bandstand, so we're gonna take out Section 4. And keep scrolling down to 18A.03, we added other parks that have shelters. You'll notice that we updated the spelling of Brainerd's Bridge. It is a possessive Brainerd's, but it's an ARD at the end, not ERD. And our number one under that section talks about how we use online reservation forms instead of paper applications. And those are all the changes that we're looking to make in our Parks and Recreation areas.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Just probably a?
Sure.
Quick check up on backup at Swan Park changing to Brainerd?
Yes.
That's all ERD there.
Brainerd, the street is ERD. The park is ARD with the possessive comma S.
I think the ERD spelling came from when it was annexed in, the town of Wapaka, or town of Farmington, was spelled that way, so we kept it that way. But Brainerd's is Brainerd's, that's his last name.
Right. So we did a lot of research with, with Rhonda as well, who looked back at old historical records, and we wanted to make sure that this is as accurate as possible to indicate things that have happened in the past.
All right, can't explain it either. All right, this is the first reading, so we'll see this at the next meeting, first meeting in October also. Thanks, Laura. Next on number three was tabled, as we said at the beginning. So we'll go to number four. This is a forklift purchase for the new Public Works facility. Justin?
Thanks, Mayor. This starts on page 131 of the packet. Done this before, we budgeted $125,000 for FEE, or Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, in the new facility. If you remember, we talked about some other things such as office furniture, miscellaneous things. The budget, as mentioned, 125 to date, we spent just shy of 74, so remaining, we have close to $51,000 in that line item for this budget. The total project, which we'll be talking about a little bit more here in the budget season as we progress here, is just a little over 9.1 million. That, where the bids came in, plus a contingency amount that was approved by you guys at just over 92 point, or 9.2 million, excuse me. So you can see we're within our means to fund this. So looking at this, we wanted a forklift for the new facility because we have a higher reach now with the higher roof. We do have a front-end loader which, with forks, but is not nearly as elegant of a piece of equipment that we'd like to have, especially working around a new building and some racking and such. Forklifts can reach higher as well, and what we're also looking for is a work platform or a basket which we could boom somebody up to, up in, and do maintenance, or just grab things and move things around well within, you know, our safety program. So we looked at this, you know, we did consider a brand-new piece of equipment, so we looked at some of the newer ones and thought that was just a little too pricey, being that this is a new piece of equipment to the fleet, thought lightly used would be the way to go. So Roger, taking the lead on this, sought out a number of proposals from vendors. There is a list in the memo that shows a number of them where we narrowed it down to, and you can see the range from brand-new to used, being about nine years old. We settled on this one, that's a Li Gong from 2020. It has a lifting capacity and weight that we are looking for. Again, it is lightly used for as, around 2,300 hours. It is LP and not electric at this time. We thought LP was the way to go. Discussing with other people in the field that use forklifts more often than we do, that was a recommendation from our network. So with that, just looking for the approval to go with this lightly-used piece of equipment, or forklift, excuse me, from RH Equipment and Services out of Mayville, Wisconsin, plus the work platform, which would add $1,795. I will add that this forklift is in Wisconsin. A few of these other ones that we looked at are outside, so that would increase basically our delivery or our ability to get it, so. And then finally, the funding will come out of our facility borrow, which I mentioned already, the details on that.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What is the country of origin or where this was made, and did you look into getting the availability of spare parts for it?
So this is, I'm not sure of the origin of the manufacturer, but it is wrapped from local representatives in the area, so like I said, this one is out of Mayville, Wisconsin. They will service it, they will get parts for it. These are lesser-known models, and we questioned that as well from our network. We did get some comments back that they are reliable. They are making new ones yet, so you can see we could have bought a 2024 one, but they are not very well-known. But from the input we got, it was that they're still solid machines.
Any other questions? Anybody want to make a motion to approve this purchase?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Porczatski, second by Dijkstra, that we approve the purchase of a used forklift and platform from RH Equipment and Services out of Mayville, Wisconsin, for a price not to exceed $19,695. Any discussion? Go ahead, Colin.
Do you guys already have storage racks, et cetera, for the LP tanks?
We have, we have storage racks. We only need like one LP tank for the machine. You mean to get like refilled?
Yeah. Yeah, we got it, at the rink, we got a big rack, and if you didn't have one, I would suggest you get that too.
Okay. We do not have one.
Thanks, Colin, for adding to our cost here. It's probably, well, you're going to have one reserve too, for sure, so.
It allows the LP company to drop off tanks with nobody there. They have a key. You can, anyway, it's offline discussion, sorry.
I think we can accommodate within our current footprint, so. I don't think we need anything special for that.
Any other questions, comments? Harvick Hallerall?
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul May?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Nine Is, motion carried.
All right, Justin, thank you. Next up on page 137, it's License Report Number 1690. There's three names on there requesting bartender's license. We just need a motion to approve. Move to approve. Motion by Nagel, second by Peterson, that we approve the license report number 1690. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Okay, communications recommendations of the mayor. Just want to remind you that we do have a committee of the whole meeting talking about personnel tonight. And for the public that won't be around, Eric, tell us when we can expect to see a kind of a final draft of our
Yeah, absolutely. We are looking at the second meeting in October. I believe it's October, let me just look at the calendar quick. October 15th, the first is a Tuesday. So we'll have the first draft of the budget presented as a committee of the whole meeting on October 15.
All right. Thanks. Anybody else have anything for this meeting? Yeah, we'll start just a couple minutes after this council meeting with the committee of the whole. We need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Hagan, second by Olson, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, were adjourned at 6:35 PM. All right, have a great night, everybody. Let's, three minutes. Committee of the whole meeting, I'll call it to order. We have the same number of people that are in attendance. Henry is not here, on vacation. But we do have a quorum, so we would need a motion to approve the agenda that we have, which is just that one item. Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Hagan, second by Martin, that we approve the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, let's go to Fiscal 2025 Budget Workshop. This is number, session number three, and it has to deal with personnel. Aaron, you want to go?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. City council members, I'll jump right into it. You'll see in your committee of the whole packet, there was a memo that outlines anything personnel-related and numbers tied to them. So I'll start with the first bullet point. The first bullet point just states that the city is preparing right now a budget that does not, it will continue to provide the same level of services with no eliminations or reductions. The 2025 budget is also being prepared with no additions or expansions from part-time to full-time positions at this time. You know, we've talked about some of the reasons for that from a revenue limitation standpoint. I did want to note some of the increased personnel-related expenses. Now, we do have a few other ones, but they're not tied to compensation packages, such as like workman's comp. Actually, our premiums went up for that, but I didn't want to kind of count that in really the focus on what we're looking at tonight. Insurance premiums, we did finally hear that that will be going up 8%. Last year, it went up 15. You know, over the last 12 months, we've been looking at creative ways in which we can have a more control over that number. Some of the things that we've looked at is, one, can we partner and go in a pool with other municipalities or the school district or the county or whatever it may be. What we found is that our utilization rates are more favorable than almost everybody that we have looked at a potential, as a potential partner, which means we would be hurt by getting, jumping into their pool. Another thing we've looked at and had meetings with the county representatives from the school district is private clinics that serve employers or a few employers that band together. Numbers that we received off of that, it would be almost a, this probably still would have went up 8% this year, while it almost assuredly would have. And then it would have been another $100,000 a year that you're committing towards supporting that in hopes that over time, by utilizing that clinic, you wouldn't see as steep of increases. That was not data that showed savings anytime in the near future at all for us. So that's kind of the result of that. So the other thing that's important to note is that we're a smaller organization. We have 61 full-time employees, just over 90 full-time equivalents. Of course, the 61 are the only ones that are eligible for health care. Only about 34, I think it's 34 of those employees are taking the health care. The reason that only about half of them are is because we have that opt-out benefit, which means if you do not take the health care, or if you take a spouse's health care, some of ours are younger, young enough to actually still be on their parents' insurance. They get a $5,000 annual payment that's added to their wages. So that's helped us a lot. It makes our pool smaller, which, which means we can't go to market. But we did ask the question, even if we had all 61 on, would that help us be more marketable? The answer is no. That's still too small. So that doesn't really hurt us in that way. Now, one thing with having only about half of your employees on the health insurance, now it saves us a ton of money, but it can fluctuate from year to year. That's the next bullet point. You can see additions or expansions to the health insurance plan. That might be, there was a few individuals that either expanded from maybe a single to a single plus one, or a family, or maybe just jumped on the health insurance altogether. So we are planning for that, and that impact for 2025 right now is looking like it might be about $42,000. And then we do have dollars budgeted for cost-of-living adjustments in 2025. And right now, we have $95,870 budgeted. How that would get distributed, what that ties out to from a percentage standpoint, we will provide that detail as we get closer to the October date that I just gave, October 15. Some of the reasoning for that is that we are still in negotiations with the police department, so there's some unknowns there. We do have a tentative agreement. We had a very productive meeting a week ago, or I can't remember, time flies. But that still has to get ratified. The membership for the police union has not had a chance to have that meeting and make that vote. So we're waiting on that. There are also a few revenue lines that we have not seen come in and a few expense lines. We feel like we have a pretty good idea of what those will be. But again, we're waiting on that. You'll see, I also have in this memo a little further down, just for some perspective. So if you total all those bullet points up, that's about $166,000, or to be exact, 166,701. And we are projecting revenues increasing by about $259,000. So as a percentage of the revenues that are increasing, that's about 65% is going towards personnel-related costs. So just an FYI. Always put this on here just because I think it's relevant. You know, obviously, what happens when things don't go exactly as planned? You saw in the audit report that our fund balance in the general fund is pretty healthy right now, especially considering last year, we added the $394,000 to the general fund balance. We're sitting at 30.7%. Our policy is between 20 and 25, but it is nice to be in that, to be honest, 30 to 35 range, because when we have those payouts for sick leave or anything because of retirements or resignations, you know, that automatically impacts in audit. And when we go to bond, our fund balance percentage is looked at. And we don't want that to all of a sudden be necessarily 20% and have it drop to 15, even though we know it's going to recover in a year. So that's a little bit on that. I wanted to just give a general, so I mentioned that we're projecting about $259,000 of increased revenues. It'll help support some of this. Wanted to give, highlight some of the big ones. General fund property tax levy and personal property aid. Now, those are two different things. The property tax levy is the amount of the levy that's tied to levy limits, which we always talk about how important that is. We're going off of a 1.22%, which is approximately $30,900. Now, what we didn't realize until we just worked through the levy limit worksheet is that with Act 12, it appears that we're still going to get the 1.22% in increased revenues, but where it's coming from this year appears to be different. Good for taxpayers, because it looks like our levy that supports this is actually reduced from a year ago. And the personal property aid, which is really state aid at this point, is increased. And that increase offsets the reduction, and it comes out to about the 1.22%, which is about $30,900. Now, when we get to that first look at the final budget, we'll show you, and we'll look at how that impacts the mill rate and all of that. But we do have questions into the DOR, because that makes 2025 easy and exactly kind of what we planned on. However, what is the long-term impacts of that? Because now we're working off a levy that is less than it would have been. How long is that personal property aid going to stay high? Is it going to go away at some point? Those are questions we have into the DOR. I will report back when we have answers. We do not have those answers yet. Shared revenue, we were budgeting off of a 2.3% increase. That was guidance given by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, based on what it looked like the trends were going to be in the state sales tax. Actually, I just got an email from Steph today. We just received our final numbers, and it was pretty spot-on. Steph, I believe it was $28,000 in increase, or a little over $28,000, so about $1,000 more than you see there. So our projections are pretty close. Total shared revenue, 1.208 million in that category. Building permit revenue, this is something that we are increasing the budgeted amount on based on historical trends, based on development agreements we have in place, based on this year's performance and last year's performance. We are moving it up by $75,000. We don't think that is just a blip. We don't think that's just a 2025 Band-Aid. We believe that that's a very sustainable number moving forward. Right now, our averages going back four years is over 300,000. This year, we are at over 380,000 at this time. So I want to counsel to be aware that that is a revenue we are inputting as we prepare this budget. Transfers from TIF, we are increasing $15,000 from TID 11. As that, TID, we've talked about this, as that gets healthier financially and starts to see those revenues come in, we do feel like that should offset costs associated with staff time, putting together the development agreements and working with the developers as those things happen. So that's an increase. Transfers from the water utility, this year, 2024, we had $25,000 budgeted, because we figured that the water utility would be paying rent for half the year, so that will be moving up to $50,000 in 2025. And then other miscellaneous fines and forfeitures, public charges for service, grant dollars, et cetera, other revenues that we expect to be increased and by various amounts. And we'll take a look at those October 15. So I did want to, so you notice we're paying attention to the general fund, and that's because the general fund is the fund that is the least equipped to handle increases. Our utility funds are financially set to be able to handle the types of increases that we're talking about associated with personnel. Here's a little snapshot of what this would mean. So we also wanted to have a goal of continuing to cover the 90% of the premium cost for health insurance, rather than scale that back, take that money out of the pockets of the employees, and you can see the impacts of that. So this budget does account, continue to account for the city covering 90%, and the employee will remain at that 10% contribution. So on a single plan, that means that the city will have an additional $609 per year that they're covering for anyone on a single plan, $1,219 per year on a single plus one, and $1,700 per year on a family plan. Of course, the employee will also have increased contributions as a part of that 10%. And you can see on a single plan, that amounts to $67, single plus one, $135, and then family plan, $189, and those are annual. This year, WRS is increasing ever so slightly. They're going up by .05%. That's both the employee and the city's contribution, so it goes from 6.9% to 6.95%. Again, there are no substantial personnel-related discussions. However, there are some personnel-related discussions that we've talked about. I'm going to let all of our department heads briefly, probably take about a minute, minute and a half to go over what those are. You can see a bullet pointed there. And I'm going to start with, since it's the first one on the list, Justin, you want to start with captive pay?
Captive pay is a policy in our handbook. I don't know if you have the draft in there or not, Aaron, but basically, it's utilized by our utility personnel, first and foremost. They each take a rotation in, each week, they are on-call, so they take a pager home. When they get called in, mainly through our SCADA system, sometimes through the sheriff's department, they have to respond within a reasonable timeframe and do their duties in, you know, for the health and safety of the area. This order, or policy, excuse me, was last updated in 2011, in 2005. So 2005 was to the utility workers with increasing their benefit for being captive. And then 2011 recognized the salaried employees who did not get a benefit, but then it increased at that time as well. When we looked at this, we thought it was a little long in the tooth. We needed to be competitive with our neighbors. So we had reached out to our network and received roughly 30, 35 comparables. New London, Stevens Point, Rapids, Plover, Greenville, Amherst, Manuel, Berlin, Yowiega, the list goes on, even in the Valley. And this would put us at a very competitive place, considering New London, Stevens Point, Rapids. And those are the ones that we feel we're competing with for the employees at the wastewater and water department. It puts us underneath many of the communities in the valley. That's just hard to do, given our population and their competitiveness there. But what we're looking at is to increase the benefit of each week when they're on, they get three hours of overtime added to their check. We would increase that to be one overtime hour a day. So that is a fairly significant increase. It's almost double. And then when they get called in, they get two hours of overtime call or pay, and that's what they get. We would propose to change that to they get two hours plus the time they worked. And then we're looking at extra time for holidays and potentially for weekends. So those things are all kind of up in the air right now, but we've settled on what we thought would be pretty decent. The reason why it's not solidified right now is we have other departments that utilize various types of captive pay and on-call. We want to try and make sure we have something that works for everyone, especially within the city here and the various departments. The impact of our budget is shown on there, so the water and sewer would nearly double, if not a little bit more. Street department, not as much as typically reserved for a snow Street department, not as much as typically reserved for snow events. And our department likes to bank our time, so instead of getting overtime pay, they bank it in their comp bank, and then they use that. And that usually helps kind of diffuse the impact to the budget. So the details are, I thought I had in a memo here, but you must not have included it?
You had the details in the Personnel Committee meeting today.
Okay.
And this is, they, this is, yeah, a great summary.
Okay.
And counsel will see more on this moving forward.
Okay.
But it has been talked about in Personnel Committee twice, I believe.
It's Personnel twice, Utility Board three times?
Yeah, so we're continuing to just work through.
We, we know about it.
Yeah. So, and I do want to mention too, so Justin's done a lot of work on this. Justin Staff's done a lot of work on it. When it got brought to the Personnel Committee, it became apparent that, hey, there's other departments with actually separate policies for the same exact thing. So right now we're having a conversation to make sure we're kind of all together on that. And then also the budget worksheets that are being turned in as part of the overall budget does account for the impact of this. So we're working towards that with this in mind for the October fifteenth meetings. Thanks, Justin. Justin, why don't you just really quickly, too, I think the, you have one more with the transition. This is not something new, but you can give a summary on this, too.
Yep, 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 I'll quickly do it. We did this before. Our custodians, we bring them on through a staffing agency. We have one we want to bring on full-time. It's a category change from being a, a contract employee to an actual official employee. Tickle just brought this through the budget season just as a F Y I and, and being transparent. But we bring this person on from service-first staffing to an actual, we will see savings in the wages and our, or our budgets. So we are looking just to have that applied January of twenty-five.
All right, thank you, Justin. And then Laura, I know you're looking at rehiring a position that was in previous budgets for the senior center, but I'll let you talk a little bit about that.
Sure, thanks. So in two thousand twenty-three, we had a senior center part-time person retire, and we didn't fill that gap with an individual at that time. Instead, we filled it with our current instructors filling in at some of those classes that the prior instructor had taught. Well, we've increased our membership by over two hundred and fifty people since two thousand twenty-two, and they're clamoring for more classes. Our classes are super full, and our current instructors are stretched really thin. So we would like to bring back that part-time hire and, and expand some of our class options as well. And we are looking at hiring this person for about six hundred hours a year, starting at thirteen fifty, thirteen fifty. And, and they'll take on some of the classes the prior instructor had, add new classes. But we are going to have plenty of money in the budget because our revenue has increased substantially due to the increased number of members. And also, we have money in our supplies budget that we can put into this wage line item as well.
Thank you, Laura. Library fund, Eric, do you want to give some updates on what you and the Personnel Committee at the library have been working on?
Absolutely, absolutely. So we had several retirements of important, long-tenured staff at the start of this year. We're still working to fill the last of those positions, the head of youth services position, aim to have all of them filled by the end of the year. We do have another expected retirement of Jan Rodamacher that is expected at the end of the year here. The payout budgeted for that, the initial estimate was thirty-nine thousand dollars. So we'll be working to assess and move forward with that opening as well. It is, our youth services positions are some of the most important. That youth services program is nationally recognized, so we're taking, and the library board recognizing that is taking the youth services openings very seriously, working to make sure that we get well-qualified and excellent folks into the department to fill openings. I have been working and plan to continue to be working to make the department as efficient as you can. I think that's an important value, and I think it's one that the, when you're working with public funds that residents like and expect to see. So we've been using technology and metrics to streamline what we do, maximize benefits to the community. And trimming has happened primarily through turnover, dropping shifts that we no longer needed. Through, through that, we've managed to drop from thirteen point eight seven F T E, which in two thousand twenty-two marked us as a decided outlier in terms of staffing for libraries this size. And we've dropped down to eleven point five, which puts us more into a normal range. So that's where things stand with the library, and we're, we're aiming for at the start of the next year.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. And then the last one, I'll just speak on. Clad Arrow, when they first started taking over the management of the airport, they signed into a three-year contract for that work. It's hard to believe that three years is going to be up in the spring of two thousand twenty-five. So City Council can expect to see a contract or proposed contract renewal come forward, actually probably within a month for that. And we're looking at a more, a longer-term contract. I can tell you right now, we're looking at a term of about ten years. Now, there are provisions that, for any reason, we can get out of that. And looking at increases that align with the cost of living increases that City Council votes to give the rest of employees, even though this is a contract employee. Those are some of the highlights of that, but we'll get more into the details of that when I bring it forward as an action item. So that's that. Any questions from City Council members on any of those items for any of the department heads? Or anything I've covered? Okay, if not, of course, like we will, will reiterate some of this stuff when we're looking at the line-by-line budget, when those numbers are all solidified and we're taking a look at it as a whole. But right now, that is what's being prepared to provide a fair cost of living adjustment, what we view as that. And then also a, retain the health insurance at ninety percent. So wanted to make you aware of all of that. Good. Any other questions?
Comment or question?
Yeah, go ahead.
In general, Aaron, looking at, as the public would look at this.
Yeah.
We had a rather large tax increase last year.
Yeah.
And we're going to go fifteen or seventeen percent. Rather than break it into two lower ones, we went the whole wide. So that hit people pretty hard. And everything here seems to me to be at least reasonable. There's nothing way out of line here by anybody. So I guess my concern is when you see the bottom line, I just hope we stay within the, what you projected at one point, two or three percent tax increase.
Yeah.
The actual tax itself, no. That's all I'm concerned with in general.
Good question. You know, I can tell you, we went through debt service when we went through capital. And you know, that, that very modest increase in the debt service, which we wanted to align more with our natural growth, aimed to keep the taxes rate flat for a while. This was a little bit of a surprise on this levy limit worksheet thing. It's interesting because if this actually is the way it looks on the levy limit worksheet, and that levy reduces, that could offset any even modest increase in the debt service levy. So, long story short, we're expecting that to stay very flat. I will also have a mill rate worksheet that I'll show you as soon as all of those numbers are finalized and that the public can see as well.
It's a, and this is discussion we will probably have at the fifteenth of October when you get to see the bottom numbers. But you could see, you'll really see how hard the department heads and Aaron have worked to try and keep that percentage low. When, especially when you figure that at least seventy-five percent of our budget is payroll-related and, you know, the cost of living increases are a lot higher than two percent. And so we want to make sure that our employees don't go backwards, for sure. So as you'll see, there'll be a recommendation, you'll saw it tonight, kind of, but you'll see a recommendation more than that percentage that you're talking about, Dave, but they have found other ways, at least this year, to try and keep that percentage as low as possible. Thank you. Any other questions?
I guess I got one more thing. Going back with the captive pay, and I probably missed a couple of things with a few Personnel Committee meetings. WAPAC Online with the, with an expanding broadband network throughout the county, have they been considered with the captive pay to keep that network up? Everybody's relying on the services that's being put out there by WAPAC Online. Has that been considered at all?
I can answer that, Justin. So Josh has been a part of those Personnel Committee meetings in which it's been discussed. They have not been a part of the one-on-one discussions between departments as of right now, primarily due to they, they do not have somebody in a regular captive pay schedule. It was brought up today in the Personnel Committee meeting by one of our Personnel Committee members. And certainly that will lead to a conversation with Josh to just make sure that there's not a group being left out that should be. I'm not sure that they should be yet, but because of that comment, we'll make sure we have that conversation.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead.
So Cory? We have a COLA number. What, what is that as a percent?
So that is going to be, that will be talked about when we have some more finalized numbers and after ratification of the union contract.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're in negotiations now, so we're trying to keep that a little hidden, so.
That is a question we knew we would get, so I understand.
All right, anybody else? Hearing none, we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Hagan? Olson, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, were adjourned at seven oh nine P M. Have a great night.